All right, I'd like to welcome everyone here. This is, uh, we're just a few minutes away from starting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then I'll bring the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've given us. Thank you for this time together as a, as a council representing the residents of our city. And God, we just ask that, that you guide us tonight, give us good decisions. God, that, that we'll make the best decisions for those we represent. Father, I also ask special blessing on our country right now and, and Lord, for all the, the issues that are going on. And Lord, protect Springdale from that. And, but, but also we ask your protection on our whole nation as, as we come together and, and, and God, do what we know what's right for each other. God, we just trust you for that. Now in Jesus' name, amen. All right, I'd like to welcome you here tonight to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, our first council meeting of, of the year. We, uh, do have large print available. Patsy's got them back there. I know it, there may not be anybody in the room right now that needs it, but if, if we see somebody that, that asks for that, we'll know where they're at as they come in to make comments to the, to the council. Our city clerk, we're sitting a little different tonight. For those watching, we're, we're spreading out per the governor's order and we are, uh, spreading out and, and because of the, the spike in the virus and, and so bear with us, we may, uh, seem a little disjointed tonight, but our city clerk and our city attorney are way over there. So, uh, so thank you all for, for doing that. And Denise, why don't you call the roll?
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
You're gonna have to get right in that mic.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Kevin Flores?
Here.
Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fugierus?
Here.
Ernest K?
Here.
All right, thank you. Um, item four is the, is the agenda item the council sets aside each regular meeting to hear comments from our residents. If there are any citizens that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come at this time. We ask that you please keep your comments brief, clearly state your name and address, and understand that we won't take action on anything tonight that you bring forward. Is there anyone that would like to address the council tonight concerning something that's not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir?
Just a second.
Yes, sir.
This past Thursday-
Wait just a minute, start with your name and address, please.
My name is Zach Taylor. I live at 502 West End Street, Springdale.
All right, Zach, go ahead.
This past Thursday, I was scrolling on Facebook, seeing all the news and posts regarding the riots that occurred at the Capitol Building. I came across a post from a man in Springdale community praising Richard Barnett, who was caught lounging in a chair in Pelosi's private congressional office. I learned that the man is married to a democratically elected city council member here in Springdale. I believe that the democratic ideals we have as a community are extremely important. Yes, he is a private citizen, like many others in our city. I'm concerned that the democratically elected officials here share the same anti-democratic ideals. Getting, sorry, getting information from the Springdale website, I reached out to each of you, as well as the mayor, sharing my concerns. After I left a voicemail with the council member married to the man mentioned earlier, I got a call from a private number. I am, I didn't immediately say anything because I don't usually answer phone calls, uh, private phone calls. And all I could hear was deep, heavy breathing, followed by the demand, "Who is this?" I hung up the phone and immediately the phone rang again, a blocked number again. Who? Which she already had been doing. And the unknown dialer stated, "Oh," I could speak to the council. I hung up on him again shortly after. I was very shaken and I am still very concerned. It is unbelievable I cannot even reach out to my public officials to follow the standards you all adhere to. Is this something the citizens of Springdale need to be concerned about? Does this council member always share private information, information shared with her as an elected official, with her husband? Will other constituents or residents of this town need to fear bullying or appraisal when they are contact, when they contact this council person? When a citizen expresses concern to an elected official, can they expect to be contacted and verbally accosted by that person's family or husband? That's all.
Thank you, Zach. So, anyone else? Okay?
Hey, I, I just wanna say that, um, that gentleman speaking called at midnight and left a voicemail. He did not say who he was, what he represented, what he even wanted. Um, all he said were, was harassing things, cuss words, saying that I was ashamed for my family and for the community, and that I wouldn't last long. Now, for me, that was, uh, what does that mean? I don't know this person. They didn't identify themselves. Um, and so, um, whenever I told Walt and said, "Hey, you know, why, why this strange person called," and he called and did, um, return the call. The guy did call back a second time, also around midnight, and, um, left a second voicemail, all which had been turned in to the police, all which were given to the media for, for check reference. Um, and that's when he starts with the story of you allowed your family to talk to a constituent and all of that thing. But, um, I just wanted to set the, set the record straight here on exactly how that story, um, took place.
All right.
That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Uh, let's move on to item five, the approval of minutes. Uh, you had an opportunity hopefully to, to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Thank you. I'm gonna turn this over to, uh, this, uh, item six is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Later on the agenda, items number nine and 10 deal with the banning a portion of utility usement on adjacent properties for the case he's going in out on 412 East. The statute requires, before we can take action on the ordinance, that we hold a public hearing on this petition. So I'd ask if there's anyone here who wishes to be heard on this petition to vacate this portion of utility usement on these properties.
Let me double check with our folks out, out front. Is anyone outside waiting to come in for a specific, for this item, the public hearing? Okay, we don't have any. Ernest?
So we'll close the public hearing and continue on?
All right, item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, counsel?
Move for A and B.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for A and B. Uh, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right, item eight, I'm gonna turn over to our finance committee chair, Jeff Watson. Jeff?
We had a finance meeting last, uh, Monday evening. Uh, the only item before the finance committee had to do with the, um, leasing of vehicles for the Public Works Department. Um, I'll read the title to that resolution to approve the execution of that lease agreement. The title to the resolution is "A Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Vehicle Lease Agreement."
Please, please. Move the resolution be adopted.
Second. All right, we have-
Has anything, has anything changed on that from when we had that presentation?
Brad, have there been any, there, there been no changes?
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Anyone? Anyone in the room? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, uh, the next three items are, are ordinances. Don't believe any of them went before the ordinance committee, but I'm gonna turn them over to, uh, they did, Ernest?
No, they didn't.
They did not. But I'm gonna turn them over to our ordinance committee chair, Mike Overton, uh, to walk us through these.
Okay, Mayor, the, uh, these next two ordinances pertain to the public hearing that we just held and has to do with, uh, with vacating, uh, non-used utility usements on a property on 412 West that is, uh, owned by two separate entities. And the first one is an ordinance releasing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of utility usement located on property in Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, declaring emergency for other purposes. Move the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance that's been read. Uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Has emergency clause?
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance's emergency clause, carry eight zero.
The second ordinance pertains to the second, uh, to the same piece of property, Mayor. It's an ordinance releasing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of utility usement located on property in Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Move the ordinance pass.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance that's been read. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Emergency clause?
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
A second.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance's emergency clause, carry eight zero.
And then the, uh, next one is, as soon as I get to it-
Setting a hearing date?
Yes, this, next one is, uh, setting, uh, a, an ordinance setting a hearing date for annexation of property into the, uh, city of, uh, Springdale and, and ordinance calling for the annexation of, of land percent to Arkansas Code annotated 14-40-501.
All right, and just to be clear for everybody, this is not, this is not to annex the land, this is to set the hearing date.
That's correct. The, the ordinance, uh, would set the hearing date for February 9th. The clerk will, city clerk will publish notice, the property owners will be notified. There are nine parcels that are completely surrounded by the city of Springdale. If you look at page, pages 23 and 24 of your packet, when I first looked at this, uh, I didn't think this was an island. But if you look on page 24, there's a little diagonal gray piece, uh, it's in gray on the, that runs diagonally across parcel number nine. That is actually a separate parcel that is located in the city of Springdale. That is what makes these nine parcels actually completely surrounded by the city of Springdale. And this is all at the intersection of Dontoson Parkway and Haberton Road. So that would set the, uh, public hearing for the annexation of those surrounding lands for, uh, February 9th.
Did you say that was just a Scrivener's error by the city clerk?
No, he didn't say that.
I saw that check. Move the ordinance pass.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Uh, any other comments or discussion? All right, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right, so that hearing date is set. Thank you. Uh, Planning Commission reporting recommendations, Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item on the agenda is a replat of lots 1A through 2C of Harbor Meadows Plan Unit Development Phase 23. Uh, Planning Commission reviewed this preliminary plat, or this replat and recommends approval of the plat. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance admitting, an ordinance accepting the replat of lots 1A through 2C of Harbor Meadows, PUD, Phase 23, a plan unit development in the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring emergency."
This is the portion, uh, this is, uh, just west of Crane Auto Dealership, right?
And behind the car wash and the-
Yeah.
The offices at front end of 412, yeah.
Right, okay.
The lake is just to the north of it.
Buffalo Wild Wings, yeah. Okay.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Anyone?
I got a, I got a question there.
Go ahead.
Uh, Patsy, at the Planning Commission meeting, did, did someone raise some, uh, an issue about the, the water around there? I couldn't hear, so-
The question was about the pond itself and the sediment that is accumulating in the lakes and what would need to be done with those.
It's completely separate, okay.
It's not really, right, it's really not an issue with this replat. Uh, it'll have to be taken care of with the drainage and the project itself.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Denise?
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause pass.
Second.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
We need emergency clause?
Kevin, did you say, did you say no?
Oh, you said yes.
Both the ordinance's emergency clause, carry eight zero. I heard the same thing.
And it does have the emergency clause because there is a pending action on the piece of property. The next item is a request for a conditional use for a use unit 44, which is a mobile vending site. The request is made by Smith &amp; Walker Enterprises for a wet willy's pet wash to be located at 1386 East Emma Avenue. The applicant also requested that the operation be, allowed to be 24-hour operation. It is a coin-operated, not manned facility, and they are connecting to the utilities of the existing structure that's there. The area around the, um, mobile vending unit will have to be paved. Planning Commission recommends approval of this conditional use with the following conditions. Uh, if the health certificate is required, display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs. No vending upon a public way. No sound device that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violate any other city ordinances in connection with the vending operation. Sites to remain clean and free of paper or refuse of any kind generated from the operation of the business with all trash or debris accumulating within 20 feet of any vending stand to be collected and deposited into a trash container. The title of the resolution reads, "A Resolution Approving the Condition Use at 1386 East Emma Avenue," as set forth in ordinance number 4030.
Have we had anyone speak out against this at all?
I don't believe there was anyone at the Planning Commission. There were some questions asked about how it was gonna operate, but it was a unanimous vote by the Planning Commission to recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Patsy.
Is this a coin-operated pet wash?
Yes, sir. There are others in location. There's one at Tonti Town and one at, um-
Fayetteville, uh, in, uh, Darlington North?
Yeah, and one in Fayetteville, right.
Oh.
The owners of the facility are here, if you have any other questions.
I'm just curious, hadn't heard of one, but-
Yeah.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, item 13, I'm gonna turn over to Ernest, but I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, read it. "A Resolution Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds to Acquire Portion of Land from Nets Global Holdings LLC for the Dixieland Road Project, Project Number 18BPS14." This, uh, this would be, uh, I think, Ernest, this would be right way out of our street bond for the, for the Dixieland project. You, you might give us some background on it.
It is. This was, this was turned over to my office to, to file condemnation on. Uh, the estimated just compensation was $4,300. I spoke with the property owner and, uh, he's requesting additional $700 to settle it, which would be an even $5,000. And our land acquisition policy requires to be brought before the council for consideration. And it's actually, there's actually a comp in our appraisal that would justify that.
So the justification for the $700 is because of a comp?
Yes, and it would save us the filing fee and the-
Right.
You charge more than that to write a letter.
So, if, if there had not been an increase, would we even be dealing with this or would, would we still have to approve it?
I don't understand your question.
Well, the, why is this coming to the council?
Oh, because it's an increase in compensation above our appraisal.
So, that was my, that was my question. Had it not increased from 4,300 to 5,000, it would've just been a done deal and you would not have brought it before the council?
Correct. And it, it actually, the, the mayor, I had to go to the mayor first, who, who is recommending the increase in compensation before it gets to you all pursuant to the land acquisition policy as well.
But again, under the land policy, the land acquisition policy, if, if they accept what we offer, we don't have to approve that, right?
That's correct. I, I just thought I'd reach out to the property owner instead of filing it in court, take a stab at it, and he's, and he's like, Mr. Overton, he's like, it'll cost us more than just agree to this a little additional amount, so.
I move the resolution be adopted.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All right, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right, Kobe, I'm gonna ask you to, I didn't, we didn't talk about this, but, uh, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead, while I'm reading the resolution, I don't, I don't know if either of these individuals are here. I don't see Mark. I know Mark. Um, but this is a, item 14 is a resolution approving appointments to the Energy Improvement District, number one. And, uh, this is a, this is an interesting, uh, uh, these are appointments in that we look for very specific, uh, background and very specific, uh, expertise, uh, in this. Not that we don't consider those things for every appointment, but, but this one especially. And Kobe, give us a little background on, on these. You've got, you've got some information for Mark on your, that's been handed out.
Both of them.
Oh, both of them? Okay, and Mark, the two. Good.
The two names that we're putting before you are Mark Cloud and Miranda Gothier. Uh, this is, uh, two names that we're submitting, uh, that we'd like to have approved for the Energy Improvement District, number one. Uh, that's something that Springdale became a part of, uh, in December of 2015. Uh, we joined the city of Fayetteville. This was enabled by legislation in, uh, 2013, I believe, by, uh, the House passing the legislation. The, the governor at the time was, uh, in favor of this. He listed quite a few reasons of why we would want to do this, but the main, the main thing that we take away from it is what they call PACE. Um, I don't wanna get this wrong, property assessed clean energy. Uh, this is, this is an opportunity for the property owners to obtain financing, to do, uh, improvements, uh, through other sources of renewable energy. Uh, Scott Edmondson's here. Scott served his term. He can't be on the committee, uh, starting this year. Him and another gentleman had to rotate off. And so we were looking for two individuals. Jennifer Steele, who chairs that board and is appointed by the mayor, requested that we add someone that had experience in, in banking and finance. Uh, we have a pretty ro, robust, uh, background of other individuals on the, on that committee. Uh, both Mark and Miranda are involved, um, in that industry. Mark is, uh, with First National Bank and Miranda is with Centennial Bank. Mark does have a little bit of experience with the PACE. Mark does have a little bit of experience with the PACE. He does have an understanding of how that operates. Miranda's very involved in the community, wanted to find a way to get more involved with the city of Springdale, and we thought this would be a good opportunity since they were looking for someone in banking.
Is there a geographic location of this district?
There is. I don't have a map of that with me, but it does encompass Springdale, Fayetteville.
Is there a title, Green Energy Ets?
Of what now?
Green Energy Ets, is that their title?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I was just unfamiliar with the-
Chairman Overton, you can call it whatever you'd like.
They're just trying to keep bankers off the street.